This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. We have a quorum, the meeting has been duly called, and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thanks everybody for coming out today. As always, the first part of our agenda is public participation, usually anyway. So, we do have one speaker today, Ms. April Box. Yep, you're the one.
Hello, oh my God, I'm so nervous.
It's okay. It's a light crowd.
Okay, I'm April Box. My son Beau Box, you can't say his first name without saying the last, is fifth grader at Jack, and also have a daughter Claxton, you can't say her name without with adding the last name, at Woods. And I know teachers hate when parents say this, but I'm a former teacher that taught grades K through eight in Georgia and Beverly Hills, some private and some public before deciding to go into sales and then deciding to stay home because I just really don't like to work. Anyway, I've lived in Tyler for 12 years, and I don't understand a lot of the traditions in Tyler. However, the one that I do find to be one that I understand fully is the rite of passage for fifth graders of attending Camp Tyler. A tradition my husband actually remembers as being one of his favorite memories in elementary school, and he can't remember anything. Anyway, I'm here basically to ask for some help. I know COVID put a kink in this tradition, and I know it's put a strain on the district in so many different ways, totally understand that. But I'm here to ask that we do all we can to continue this experience in the way that offers the full benefits of the program. When I first learned that Camp Tyler may not happen for my son, I started asking questions. A few fifth grade teachers encouraged me to make it happen, which is exactly the type of teachers that we need in the district that really want to see a good activity take place, and even though it takes time away from their personal time. So I started talking to people, interviewing past campers, parents, kids, all kinds of stuff. One of the most touching stories I heard was from a parent that attended this camp as a child, and it solidified my decision to figure something out to make it work. Prior to this mom attending Camp Tyler, she'd never been to camp or been on a vacation. She lived in a very sad, kind of broken home, a lot of abuse. The only time she ever really spent the night away, she said, was if DFAX was involved. So she was pretty scared to go to this camp. She said it changed her life for a number of reasons, and one of them was right when they got ready to leave and her clothes were in a paper sack. Everybody else had monogrammed bags. She said, "I remember being humiliated." Another was when she got ready to go to bed, and she had her own bed to sleep in, kids were laughing before bed, and then she said she slept the best night she's ever slept. And if you're a mom of any kids, you know that you all remember that one night, you got that good night's sleep. The third reason was, sorry, also she recalled eating dinner, a real dinner. And then another one was when the most popular girl in the grade picked her first to be on her team. The fifth was when she had to leave and realize she'd never get to do something like this again. She said she kept all those memories and all those experiences in her mind, and started doing better in school, ended up putting herself through college, graduated, and is now a nurse. And the first thing she buys for her children when they're born is a monogrammed overnight bag. Thought that was kind of neat. It really opened my eyes, though, and made me think of this camp like I hadn't before. The Camp Tyler experience might be the only time some of these kids ever get to spend the night away, might be the only time that they get to be around other kids of different, you know, backgrounds, might be the only time some kids get to hear laughter before going to bed, might be the only time that they sleep in a bed alone. With middle school just around the corner, we know hormones will kick in, just can't wait, and the emotional and mental, mental and physical changes will follow. It's a rough time for many kids in many ways. What I love about Camp Tyler is that it offers a way for these future sixth graders, come together, get to know one another, learn more about themselves, and bond with one another before the craziness hits. From all of my questioning, the most common theme amongst the stories I heard was the underdog theme, where everybody seems to remember when the underdog did something they were totally, it was totally unexpected. And I think that is one of the big things that helps, too, because when they get to middle school, they might remember, hey, that's the kid that's super good at this, and maybe stand up and stand up against peer pressure, stand up against bullying. This is the time for so many life-changing moments that are very, the very reason we chose public school over private. It's a time for the girl that never talks to show she can really sing, the boy that sits alone to show he's a master at conversation, or the kid that's always in trouble to prove that he's an amazing leader. It's a time for him to come together and help each other and bond. I spoke with someone at Camp Tyler recently and was told TISD will be meeting with the camp on Tuesday to discuss plans for this year. Their hope was that the students would at least get to participate for a day without the overnight option, which is included in the price. At this point, we'll take whatever we can get, but the better option would be at least two days and two nights, the best would be three days and two nights, mainly because it takes some kids a full day to acclimate, and then once the lessons and everything are over, they can relax and realize that they're in an environment that they can actually sleep. I realized it's $95 a day, and I immediately got on the phones and started calling people. I have plenty of people lined up, ready to donate and help. I kind of challenged our people in our grade at Jack to, I said, if we can get 50 parents to do 200 bucks, we can at least get another night, piggybacking on the one night the TISD may approve. It sadly only applies to Jack's participation mainly because I had to start somewhere, and that just happens to be my son's school. And I also know that the schools, the teachers are totally behind the efforts. If I need to continue asking so that the whole district can participate, I'm happy to do that. In closing, and yes, I am planning to stop talking, and on behalf of the fifth grade Patriots at Jack, I ask that you do any and all you can to continue this tradition, give these fifth graders the opportunity that is so needed. With the upcoming meeting with the camp, I beg you to please talk to the district leaders, request they make something happen. If they only agree to one day, we're happy to piggyback on that one day. If Camp Tyler is just not a possibility, you know, well, we can actually rent it privately and do it on our own. That's not really the most ideal situation, but we really feel so strongly about it that we're willing to do whatever we can.
Thank you, Ms. Box.
You are so welcome, Mr. Way. Thank y'all.
Okay, the next portion of our meeting is continuous improvements and student outcomes. We have bilingual and English as a second language program evaluation.
Per your board monitoring calendar, today we have our bilingual ESL program evaluation. Hannah Seguline will be up here at the table along with Dr. Kristi Hansen, Assistant Superintendent for Academic Support. Ms. Seguline is the Director of Bilingual ESL here in the district, where we've seen some growth in the performance of our bilingual ESL kids. So we're going to turn it over to y'all for your annual program review to the board.
Thank you. Mr. Washman, members of the board, Dr. Crawford, so I'm really pleased to share with you what we have been doing with the bilingual ESL program in the district. So... This is working? Can you... Next slide? Okay, there you go. So, first of all, the numbers that we have, the numbers have actually increased, so now we are at 23% emergent bilinguals, which is the new designation for our students. TEA changed from limited English proficient to emergent bilinguals to emphasize the growth of the students acquiring both languages. So it's an additive program, so we are really pleased with that. This is how the students are disseminated across the different grade levels. To note that we have fewer students in grade 10 because of the English 2, usually they do, by that time, they acquire their English and they are able to exit the program. That's why we have fewer students on grade 10. Every year when a teacher needs to teach our students and they don't have the certification, we file for waivers and exemption. And so last year, we filed for 49 ESL teachers, and this year, we are in a much better place. The projected is 31. We think it might be even lower, and we have four bilingual ESL teachers, bilingual teachers that are going to be filed for exemption. For those teachers, we are required by TEA to provide a comprehensive professional development plan, and so these are the things that we offer for them, to get acquainted with the teaching strategies for ELs. And so there's professional development, and then there's support on campus, helping them with individual coaching cycles to make sure that we are targeting the population that they have in their classrooms. And then the next thing that I wanted to share is the dual language, Spanish language proficiency. I'm very pleased to report growth. What you can see in the red and the blue is where our students were at the beginning of the year and where they were at the end of the year. And what I'm sharing with you is the number of students at the advanced high proficiency. That's why first grade is lower than the others. Very important to note that sixth grade, which is only Bertwell, the Bertwell School, is at 100%, and that is maintained from last year with advanced high. So it means that the trajectory for Spanish in speaking is achieved, and I'm also very proud, you're going to see the different skills, how the students were able to go up from the beginning of the year till the end of the year, which of course, at the beginning of the year, these kids have not had direct instruction, you know, due to the pandemic, we cut short in March. So this is for the listening proficiency, which you see it's much higher because it develops faster. This is the reading. You see a little bit of less growth in fifth grade. We think that that is because teachers were focusing on all the strategies to pass the ELLAR test, and so that's why it wasn't as apparent in the growth of Spanish reading proficiency. And finally, writing. And sixth grade for Spanish did amazingly well in what they were doing at the beginning of the year in comparison to the end of the year. So we are very, very pleased with the development of the Spanish language. Of course, from fifth grade below, we have four schools, we have three other schools, which are Dixie, Bonner, and Bell participating. I thought this was not supposed to be... Okay. Do I... Okay. So for the bilingual ESL summer school that we had last year, we are required by the state to provide summer school for pre-K and K only. We were able to extend it all the way to third grade, and the number of students that you see in the two schools where we had them, that is the final number. That means 215 students came from day one till the last one, so it's not just the number of kids that we had enrolled. And for Bonner, it was 183 kids. We had some community workers come and share with the students, they were a really big hit with them, and we did all sorts of activities. We taught all four content areas. The biggest effort was the English language acquisition, so that was our main focus for summer school. We hope that we're going to be able to do exactly the same this summer, that we're going to be able to extend it to at least third grade. Students exited from the program. We had 67 this year, and they are divided into three categories, so 32 students from elementary, 27 from secondary, and eight students were parent denials, that means they were not receiving services. But they were successfully completed the different tests, and they were able to exit the program and acquire advanced high rating in all domains. And finally, the teachers that we trained during last school year, it's 727. Trainings were some face-to-face, but mostly online. The one thing that the pandemic afforded us was the opportunity to participate in regional, state, and national conferences because they were online, and so we are very proud to have, you know, sponsored 31 teachers that actually donated their time during the summer to attend virtually national conferences, which usually is a little bit out of the reach in the summer to just travel across the country to attend. So that gave us a little bit of possibilities. It's the same thing with state and regional. When I say regional, it's usually Region 10, the Dallas area, to participate in their bilingual conferences. So this is who we are in our department. We have two sections, our legal section and our instructional section, and we hope to see the same or even better growth than we did this year, next year. That's what I have for you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
On your figures and the charts and everything, it says Spanish language proficiency.
Yes.
What about their English language proficiency?
The English language proficiency is measured every year. We did not have accountability last year, so the information that I have does not necessarily reflect whether we made progress or not. But 15 schools moved up in their proficiency last year. I don't have a measure of accountability to share. Yes.
So I was super optimistic about the numbers for summer school. That seems like that's really, really good, because I know when we talk about other summer programs, it seems like we're trying to reach more kids, and that's hard to do. Do we have any data on how those kids are doing that stayed in school all summer and now coming back? I mean, hopefully, it's really good.
We don't have the data right now, but what we wanted to do is to measure how they do with Telpass, because I think that whole month of English-only instruction will impact their, you know, how they are doing in the, in the English language. So probably next year, I will be able, you know, by the end of the summer, I will be able to check how they did, because we don't get Telpass data until probably the end of July.
On the English side of things, though, we do have some Renaissance, early, beginning of the year Renaissance data that's coming up, so we might be able to call some...
Will we be able to compare the kids who were in the program at the beginning of the year, how you pull that data compared to the ones who didn't participate, as well as the middle of the year, to see if that English immersion, summer school was helpful in their growth? So we start with, can you pull that data out?
Yeah, but that's, that's kind of the first shot of seeing where the, the kids that participated this last summer, where they maybe compared to themselves, gosh, I guess, last year.
Yeah.
So that ought to be upcoming, forthcoming. Awesome.
First off, I'm very impressed with the progress that you're making with the program, and I really think that it's going in the right direction in regards to that. In regards to the certification of the teachers, I know you've said you're applying for waivers, possibly 31 plus four of them in bilingual. How is that encouraged? Do you encourage them to do that? Do they have a timeframe that they have to consider getting certification, or what's the status of that?
Yes, we work closely with Human Resources, and so there is a timeline that the teachers are given, and of course, the, you know, in the meantime, as they're working on their certification, and we do provide courses that encourage them to prepare for their tests. We also provide that support in the classroom, helping them with other types of training so that they are better equipped. So yes, they do have a timeline, and it's a joint effort from Human Resources and us.
How long is that? Is it two or three years, or is it...
It's one year.
One year?
Mm-hmm.
Where are some of the countries that we do have on visas here, some of your staff? Tell, tell us, give us a list of where their home country is.
Well, so there are people from Spain, Puerto Rico is the US, but they're coming, you know, with different teaching credentials, Mexico, Venezuela, Colombia, Ecuador, Argentina, so a little bit of...
Philippines.
The Philippines, yes.
Yeah. It's like a whole bunch of them at Tyler, teaching math.
In fact, in our department, in the instructional side, there's four of us, and we are all from different countries, so we're very international.
And maybe Mr. Jones can, can answer this for the board. How many staff from Mexico?
Probably...
Ballpark estimate?
Yeah. There may be five or six right now.
Yeah, the reason I ask that question is that's a different, the feds have actually opened that, it's, it's been so strange since I've gotten into administration almost 20 years ago now, act 20 years ago now. There was a block on Mexico, which is our southernmost neighbor, but everybody else were allowed these visas to come in to work here, and we're glad to hear that our closest neighbor in proximity, just across the river, are able to come here now to actually help us. And that's been an issue between all school systems and trying to find bilingual capable teachers, that you couldn't come from Mexico, but you could come from Ecuador, Argentina, I mean, Chile, I mean, wherever you're, you know, how far away those countries are. So that, that might be a, a windfall for us as we start looking for more staff, to get more actually out of Mexico as opposed to Spain or the Philippines. But those, those recruiting efforts are pretty difficult when you start talking about those locations. And we do have headhunters that we partner with to find those teachers, and we actually do some recruiting ourselves in normal years. We haven't done so in a couple because of what's been going on with travel restrictions.
So in regards to these teachers, they're located on all the campuses or on a certain campuses?
They are, they are across the district, so there's about 10 to 15 schools that have them.
Okay.
So just to clarify, when we talk about the waivers, we, what that means is that teachers who come in and don't have the ESL certification or the bilingual certification that's required to teach those specific students, they have one year to get that. And we, we apply to the, to TEA and say, we have this many teachers that are teaching essentially outside of their certification, and we have one year to get that, to help them get that certification. So we offer all of the professional development that Ms. Seguline showed, plus test prep classes, and in addition, we also offer English proficiency classes for our teachers who we feel like could, you know, work on some of their English skills as well, to ensure that we're helping the, the kids with both English and Spanish, or English and their native language.
Okay, how does it work on a particular campus with these particular teachers? Do they pull the kids out of class for a certain period, or is it, how, how does that work?
It depends on the model. So we have dual language campuses where they teach in English and Spanish, the campuses that Ms. Seguline talked about, and then the rest of our campuses are early exit, and so if they're a bilingual class, then, then they're in bilingual. But we also have ESL blocks for kids who qualify for ESL, but they're not necessarily in the bilingual class. So it depends on the model of the school, and it depends on what the student qualifies for.
Okay. And there's also federal and state compliance about whether or not a child can have a, or what type of teacher that child can have, so we'll make sure we're clear about that with the public and the board as well, because we've all had to grow into accepting this. I mean, Tyler's come a long way since 1982, as far as instruction of bilingual children.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments for the presenters? Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate your...
Hey, one last question before we get up. Percentage of newcomers? I always like to talk about this. Do you have that off the top of your head?
No, not right now.
Not even a ballpark or an estimate? At one time, it was only 4% of our kids were newcomers. I know that's increased, but you don't, are we, are we at 10%?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
We can get you that number, though, for sure.
Yeah, let me know, because I know that's always something that's, as, and usually it's Spanish-speaking children, even though we do have other languages that are in our bilingual ESL programming, but it's just a handful. It's just, you can only almost count it on one hand, someone that might come from Africa or someone who may come from Asia. So my point is on this, is that when we, when we got here, it's not like you're talking about a Dallas situation, where you've got 90 to 120 different languages spoken that are in your ESL and dual language programming, which is why I've charged us to be better, because when you, like the Valley, when you can serve, you know, one or two different, you know, prominent languages, you should be able to be a little bit better. And our, and our data's trending that way, that we are performing better that way. So I can imagine the challenges that some school systems have in a very diverse environment like a Dallas or Houston, or even the suburbs in Houston. We start talking about Aleve and Aldine and the different dialects and languages that they have there. Hillcrest, I think we had 80, 80, no, 60 languages, I think, that were, that were spoken by our bilingual kids while we were there, Mr. Jones. That was in Dallas, and that was light compared to some of the other schools that are there.
One thing, Dr. Crawford, so our biggest number of newcomers are going to be our kindergartners, which are considered, you know, year one.
Right.
But if you look at our students in the middle school and high school, so ninth grade and sixth grade is where you would see the biggest number, those classes are really not big at all, so we don't really have a big number of students, because the majority of our ELs are actually born in Tyler.
That's right. That's, that was my, that's kind of the punchline on this whole thing, is a lot of our kiddos are from Tyler, Texas, born in our hospitals here, raised here, attending, when they, when they can, early education opportunities here in Tyler, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we also have a class size update.
This is also part of your board monitoring calendar. We've got Tasha Bjork, our Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations, that'll be here to answer your questions about this, once a state-required reporting tool, that actually through the District of Innovation, we report this at the local level. I think you'll find that we are managing this pretty tightly as compared to years past. So Tasha, why don't you go ahead and, and address the board what you see fit, and they can ask you questions.
Okay, the way this chart works is the first five columns are the number of classrooms that are over, and the last column are the number of students. And we are probably a little, not down from last year, because last year, we were, students were still at home, some, and we had very few, like 10 last year, but we're better than we were two years ago. And we're really tight, because we only have 29 classes that are over the 22 to 1 ratio, and that's only 51 students. So most of them are one student over or two. We have a few that are three over. And these classrooms get, each classroom gets a half of an instructional aide to help manage the number of students. And we, but it's, it's pretty tightly staffed this year. Any questions on it?
Anybody have any questions?
Yes. The class size, so most of the other classes are 22 or above?
The other classes...
The other classes are 22 or below?
Below, right.
Okay. So the ones that have three or four students, are those students in, three or four students in a particular class where that teacher has 25 to 26 students? Or teacher, or is this...
We do have some of those.
Okay.
And we offered a teacher, but they felt like, they only, they're mainly bilingual classrooms.
Okay.
So we have one classroom for that grade. So if you split it, you're going to have 12 and 13 or whatever. And we had an extra bilingual teacher at another campus, but this campus wanted to manage with their teacher because they felt that they had a very strong teacher.
Right.
They didn't want to take the risk of splitting the classroom.
I understand that. You know, I have a problem with the ratio of 22 to 1, so I know I have a problem with anything greater than 22. So my, my question is, you said you, they get an aide for half a day for, is it how long?
It's a half an aide, so like...
Half an aide, okay.
They may have two classes over, so the aide will stay in one class a half day and go in the other class for a half day. That's what our District of Innovation...
I know, I know. I, I got that. I understand that. The, so, so do we ever look at having smaller classes in the elementary level?
We go by what the state requires, 22 to 1. We have looked at it before, but it is very expensive.
Yeah. Well, even with the aides, it's expensive. With the teachers, I can understand that the aides shouldn't be paid the same.
We go by what the state requires, twenty-two to one. We have looked at it before, but it is very expensive.
Yeah, well, even with the aides, it's expensive. With the teachers, I can understand that the aide shouldn't be paid the same amount.
The aide's expensive.
The aide's expensive? Okay. So we could actually put more aides, the aide could be in the class all day. And I ask the question simply because I look at the academic scores, and I think about the kids that are struggling in the elementary level. And I think that adding aides to the class to free up the teacher's time to work with those interviewed kids that may be struggling would be beneficial. Expensive, yes, if you put a teacher, it's a lot more expensive, but an aide shouldn't be very expensive, you know, to do that. And especially in those classes where they actually have kids that's actually struggling, that's not passing academically, the tests that the state requires, looking at some way to allow more time for that teacher to have, to spend with the student. And I look at that because, you know, I would like to see those, and I'm sure everybody would, would like to see those classes do better, those students do better. And I think the teacher really, with twenty-two students, it's difficult for them to address those students that may be falling behind, especially in elementary, which is the foundational years, which is what we're seeing, is that after they get in elementary, out of elementary, they're still struggling in middle school. So concentrating on elementary years, I think, would be beneficial, and trying to make sure that they get those fundamental skills that they feel very secure with. And we may even have to look at maybe the first, well, preschool up to third grade, because after third grade, they're building on what they've already learned. So looking at some model where we could actually maybe provide more teacher's aides in those classes that's struggling as opposed to the way we're doing it now. I think that we're gonna have to be creative to get those kids up to where they need to be. I think that we have developed a number of innovative, a number of things that we've added, but I think we're gonna have to really concentrate on a little more by giving them a little bit more attention. I was shocked by the amount of deficit that I've seen in some of the kids over the summer, and from talking to some of the teachers that deal with these kids, we have a lot of work to do to get them up to where they need to be. You know, I've heard that some middle schools are on first and second grade level. So, you know, and that's what I'm thinking about, if there's anything that we can do as a district to restructure, to target those kids so that they don't fall behind and are not ready by the time they get to the fourth grade. So that's the reason, that concept of adding an aide or something to free up the teacher's time, it's in my mind, from that perspective, so that we can get them to the level they need to be, get them up to their grade level, possibly.
We've added a lot of supports this year.
Right.
And I feel like things should change with all the supports we've had, and we've added aides.
Right.
At the schools.
Right, we've added those.
That's not, we've added aides, plus these are extra, but we've added other aides too.
Okay, okay.
So that, these are not the only aides. These are just to address the twenty-two to one, so we don't have to have waivers.
Right, right.
But we have hired other aides.
Right.
That help with instruction. Our campus reading specialists have aides. We've hired other aides.
I understand.
And then our staffing plan, the campuses get aides based on that. Now, how they use them is up to them.
Okay, so maybe we need to talk to the principals to make that decision?
And then they buy them out of Title I also. We have a lot of instructional aides.
So how do we evaluate the effectiveness?
I don't, I mean, that's not my...
Dr. Hanson? How do we graduate, evaluate the effectiveness of those classes that have the struggling students? Even if they have an aide, do we have some way of evaluating the success of the student coming out of that class, or determining that by any way? Since we have all the resources there, I'm trying to find out, well, and we just started a lot of these things, they haven't always been in place, so it's gonna take time. But do we have a system to evaluate the effectiveness of adding these resources to determine and to pinpoint if it's beneficial or not, and not just throwing away money?
So we have specific intervention plans for specific campuses and for specific students, monitoring that data for the students, and they also include what specific resources we're using or strategies we're using for specific kids. And then we would have not necessary causal data, but correlative data at the very least to say, we added these resources for this student or this class, and we've seen this growth or this success. So we can say that there was some correlative data that would, you know, give us the indication that that's working. Now, if we added three different strategies, can I pinpoint that this specific one was the silver bullet? I probably couldn't. But we certainly have enough plans in place that principals and teachers give us that would help us know if the menu that we're using is making a difference for kids.
And we know which campuses are using which particulars?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we can monitor the effectiveness of one program compared to another, looking at the various campuses that you may be comparing to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good.
Any other comments regarding our class size waivers?
Just a follow-up. The board is updated regularly with performance data. So that's where you see if some of the strategies are working or not. And longitudinally speaking, some of these campuses that we're concerned about, that we still want to improve, have made tremendous strides over time. So I don't want to go into this thinking that we're doom and gloom.
No, I'm not.
And we're trying, and we're trying to improve, that's what continuous improvement is, we're not satisfied with where you're at. You should never be satisfied with where you're at. I guess that's what the theory of continuous improvement is.
I'm not a doom and gloom person.
I'm not saying you are. I'm just making sure that with what's being said here, some of these resources have been deployed here. But I'll say this, this is where I was going with this.
Okay.
We've had discussions at this DIAS, not in the last two years, about where, what it takes to get class sizes down for effectiveness. There's been studies done over the last twenty-five to thirty years in regard to what a class size needs to get to for that type of, of impact. Secondly, we also know, according to, what's the guy's name? You always like to quote Dr. Hanson, I don't remember these people like you do. Hattie?
Hattie.
That the number one thing you can do is an effective teacher in front of all kids, and as far as class size goes, that overcomes class size. So we've gotta work on tier-one instruction before we start talking about that. The other thing, and I'll say this, if you're talking about aides, there's nothing better than a high-quality teacher in front of every kid. That's where we need to focus a lot of our attention to. As far as aides go, you're not adding another teacher in front of those kiddos.
Right.
Not every aide's gonna have the proficiency, or folks in the community will be available to be that teacher's aide to be able to provide instructional support.
Right.
So I, you know, I think there's some strategy, I know that we do some small group instruction, and then the aide maybe takes the kiddos over to another, a larger group over to continue on some, maybe some self-sustained work. But as far as instruction goes, it's gonna be hard to pull effectiveness out of a teacher's aide, if that's what we're expecting to do. So we've had those conversations before up here, and we continue to have these conversations with the administration as well.
Let me, let me say, I understand that. I understand the effectiveness of the teacher. One thing, we have to evaluate the effectiveness of the teacher, and it has to be objective. And then, within the classroom, if you provide an aide, it's up to that teacher to decide which students she's able to pull and work with individually. The aide would be only monitoring the ones that may be successful and doing well. The teacher would be concentrating her energies on the individuals that were struggling. Now, you wouldn't use the aide, at least I wouldn't recommend using the aide with the struggling kids. The teacher would be pulled away to be used with the struggling kids. And as far as certification goes, we allow people in our district to be not certified and to be teachers. So that is really not the issue, it's the effectiveness of the individual that's teaching.
But they are degreed.
Yeah, they, they're agreed.
When you do go to higher ed and you get in your degree, that is different. Now, I know some folks that are not degreed that are sharp, that did not have to go to college.
Right.
So as far as what's allowable by the state of Texas to be a teacher under District of Innovation, that individual is degreed, and have had had some rigor in their adult life before they enter a classroom. A lot of our teacher aides don't have that. Not saying that, not saying that that makes them any lesser than others, because there's some sharp folks that I do know that did not get that higher ed experience. So I'm not gonna argue or debate the DOI effectiveness and the qualifications there in terms of saying that one's better than the other.
Right.
But I will say this, that I think some of our aides, that we do hire, they're great people, but as far as the effectiveness of being a qualification of being a teacher, that's a degreed professional that we assign to a DOI.
How do we evaluate our aides then, from that perspective? This is a workshop, right?
How do we evaluate the aides as far as instructional effectiveness?
Right.
That, well, if I was a tool, I'd probably have to ask a jar. But the teacher is the person that really helps evaluate the effectiveness of the aides. Now, for example, we may have a paraprofessional working in the computer lab with a student as supplementary support, so that they're getting some supplementary reading assistance online, and the paraprofessional may be monitoring that classroom, but not necessarily engage in the deep instructional necessarily. Especially when you're talking about the science of teaching reading, and when we get into the depths of the complexities of what it's, what it's like to really help kids with numeracy and reading and those kinds of things, it does, are some level of expertise.
Well, the teacher will provide some assistance and evaluate it, but ultimately it's the campus principal that's gonna decide whether or not the teacher's aide is the effective, per the responsibilities and the duties of what they've assigned that person to do. And then, again, we have routine progress reporting here at the DIAS, and then ultimately it's the STAR accountability that evaluates a campus and are they using their resources effectively or not. So as far as how we score individual aides, it's gonna be teacher input, but the principal's ultimately gonna be the one that does that evaluation.
Right. But you brought up the issue about some of the aides are more effective and have great abilities than others. My perspective on that is that, in that case, we need to be, have an objective way of evaluating the aide, so that we can have our most effective aides working in the district. And the ones that need development, we help provide that development, if we want to keep them. I'm looking at proficiency, objective things that can benefit the classroom and overall benefit the student, and having a way to objectively look at that and say that, yeah, this is where we're going. I think that we've implemented a lot of things, and there are a lot of things we're gonna implement that will hopefully benefit, and in two or three years, I'd like to see that results, but in the process, I just want to cover all bases. I like the way the bilingual program is set up, where you can actively, effectively look at all those kids and you trace those kids. And I guess that's what we do on our reporting of the, of the other, the efficiency as far as the, the scores on the STAR and the RINAS, and et cetera. But I, I'm not seeing a well-defined program from that perspective, as well as I do the bilingual program, where they actually are able to track those students a lot better. And so...
I think we can track every student in the district very well. From my time on the board, we are able to track every student in the district very, very well.
Well, this board has bought exigence, again, for about the third or fourth year in a row, I believe. That does provide continuous data on student, down to the individual student, am I correct, Dr. Hanson?
Yes, sir. And we don't bring that granular data to the board.
Right.
But we were just in a meeting yesterday with the principals where we made specific students that we needed to capture this year or move to a new level this year in order to ensure that they were getting years' worth of growth. So the principal is looking at that granular data, and the principal supervisor looks at that granular data. We bring global, more global data to you as a board. I would venture to say that we do have a very robust data management and data monitoring system that we use from the top down. It just depends on how far away from the student you are as to how granular the data that you get.
Okay.
But the principal has that data, they look at that data, the principal supervisor looks at that data, it is monitored very closely. We just, we spent, what, four hours just going through the specific data, the specific kids that we know that we need to capture and be innovating, being equal right now.
Okay. I appreciate that. The granular data, I guess, is what I'm talking about and asking questions about. I don't think we talked about the granular data and the existence of the granular data, to my knowledge, if I did, I didn't hear it, within the district. So I appreciate that and understanding that a lot better from hearing that. So I guess I don't have any more questions or comments at this time.
Okay.
I have a comment. I think we're verging on micromanaging here. The people who are responsible for making sure that our students are doing well, we have hired them, and they're very capable of looking at that. And when there is a problem, they are very good at coming to us for needs that they have. When we talk about individual students and the performance of individual students, that's the job of, of the people who have that responsibility, so.
Appreciate your comment, but questions, I don't think are micromanaging. Questions are the clarifications, so I understand the process and the comprehensive process. The granular data that she talked about, I hadn't heard about, and I needed to know that to have a complete understanding of the process. There's nothing wrong with asking questions, it's not micromanaging. I ask questions to get a better understanding. If there's something I think needs to improve in, I do that. And I shouldn't sit back and not say anything if I have a question. I appreciate your comment. I try to be very specific and not micromanaging, but I will ask questions to get a better understanding so that I can make sure the management is processed in the right way.
Might be good in the future for us to maybe put on an agenda some of our board operating policies. We can look over them and talk about how we normally do things, and that way we're all clear on that, when Ms. Atkins is here and the whole board, and we'll just go through them, you know, talk about these very things. Wouldn't be bad, we have several new board members, so. Okay, thank you for the class size update. Okay, next, we have some action items. We have an approval and purchase of safety and security utility vehicles for Tyler High, Legacy, Rose Stadium, and Mike Carterfield.
Now that we have our new facilities erected at Tyler High School and Tyler Legacy, we have a need for monitoring of parking lots. So we have Doc, uh, Doctor, Agent Millsleygel here today. If you have any questions in regard to the purchase of these utility vehicles, they're different than golf carts. We do have some rules of usage about, if you want to discuss that with Agent Millsleygel in regard to who's allowed to be on those golf carts and at what times and what purposes they are. But this is a purchase that does tip over the fifty thousand dollar mark, which is the board policy for that threshold. So he's gonna go ahead and come up to the podium, maybe, or you sit at the table, whichever one you want to do.
Whatever you want to do.
If you want to talk about this real quick in regard to this need for our safety and security staff.
Good morning.
Good morning. Anybody have any questions about these vehicles?
Well, I have a comment. I do notice that on our, on our agenda, it says that they will, and this is concerning what you're talking about, only be used by officers for patrol and emergency situations. I think that's a good idea, because, you know, if, if they are being used by coaches, by people from like TJC or UT or whoever is using that, then that, you know, of course deteriorates the equipment and may make it unavailable for the security. So my comment is, I think that's a very good idea.
Thank you.
Do we have a policy in place where the key will be removed when it's not in use?
They will be locked up when it's not in use. Officers will take those keys with them, so they don't...
They get out and go over to handle a situation, they won't leave the key in it?
Right. I hope they will not.
Can we make sure they don't, that it's in a policy?
Yes.
That's a good strategy.
Yeah, we've had to deal with that in the past.
Well, the other, part of that issue is, is that administrators were also using those golf carts, and they were also using them to expeditiously, I guess, to go taxi or Uber a student from one end of the campus to the other. Our redesign of our campuses really allows for no need for that, along with some very clear understanding... clear understandings amongst our principal staff, Mr. Jones, um, that they are not to use these as well. So that is all written into the, the, the rules and regulations. The rules of engagement is what I was struggling to find, as far as, uh, when these things come on board. Now, we still don't know how far out these things are, right?
No, we do not.
Okay. Little supply chain fund?
Supply chain problem, but they're, they're coming from here in Tyler, a local vendor, approved vendor.
And therefore, outdoor use on them?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I just have to ask these things. I've seen, I've seen some goofy stuff.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not in our new schools.
No.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Agent Millsley?
I mean, Segway? Do we need Segways inside the building?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay. Well, then I'll go ahead and entertain a motion, uh, on item A.
I'm moved that we approved item A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, now it is time for executive session. Um, don't know if we'll have any action to follow, to your knowledge, Dr. Crawford. Okay. Probably no action to follow. All right.